Success, that's right. And we're here to celebrate. Oh, it was Raj who was the big winner, wasn't it?
He was. Congratulations to Raj.
Ooh, zing.
We both were. I'd been flatting that for, what, a week now?
It takes him that long.
I'm slower as I age. Okay, city clerk?
Council member, agency director, authority member Molly?
Present.
Mann?
Present.
Underwood Jacobs.
Vice mayor, vice chairman Crist?
Present.
Mayor, chairman Paris?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. The invocation tonight is Pastor...
Move to excuse Angela Jacobs-Underwood.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. The invocation tonight is Pastor Jerry Purso of Lancaster Baptist Church. Hi, Jerry.
Let's pray together. Our heavenly fathers, we come before you tonight. We do recognize our need for you. And so, Father, as we pray, we recognize, Lord, that our help comes from above. And, Lord, I'm thankful for this city and for the leadership of it. And, Father, I pray that you would give them wisdom as they discuss different topics, not only tonight, but throughout this calendar year. And, Father, we do thank you for your protection in our city. And, Lord, we hear nightly, Lord, on the news, the different crimes throughout our country. And, Father, our hearts are heavy. But, Lord, we do thank you for your protection here in this valley. And we thank you for our law enforcement and the tremendous job that they do, day in and day in night. And, Father, we just pray that you would continue to bless. Lord, we do recognize tonight Marvin and Raj, and we celebrate, Lord, their victories this past couple of weeks ago on the voting. And, Lord, I pray that you would help them to be committed, Lord, to better this community. And, Father, I pray that you bless each council member. We thank you, Lord, for them. We pray your richest blessings upon them. And, Lord, we pray for our city, that you'd bless it and that you bring prosperity and, Lord, safety to each and every family. And we ask this in Jesus' precious name. Amen.
Thank you. You want to do the pledge?
Sure. Please place your hand over your heart and repeat with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, we will hear the election presentation from the city clerk. Britt Avery.
Good evening, Mayor Paris, vice mayor Crist, and council members. I'm here to present the results of the general municipal election, which was held Tuesday, April 10th, 2018. At 8:00 PM on Election Day, we began counting the vote by mail ballots and continued with counting the ballots received at the 24 precinct locations. In the days that followed the election, the city clerk staff processed nearly 700 vote by mail ballots that were dropped off at the precincts and provisional ballots that were voted at the polls. As presented in the resolution, the results are as follows. 4,523 ballots were returned vote by mail. We had 1,021 ballots that were cast at the precincts. We had 691 vote by mail ballots turned in at the polls and provisional ballots at the polls, for a total of 6,235 ballots cast. Council member Marvin E. Crist has been reelected for a term of three years, 11 months. Council member Raj Molly has been elected for a term of three years, 11 months. The term has been reduced by one month due to action taken by this council in October of 2017, which consolidates our election with the county election beginning in March of 2022. I'd like to take this time to thank everyone who assisted us with the election process. We had more than 50 staff volunteers, along with sheriff deputies and sheriff explorers, who assisted us with vote by mail and other various assignments leading up to Election Day and over the past two weeks. I'd like to thank most especially Kathleen Stembek, our deputy city clerk, Anna Hale, our administrative clerk, and Jocelyn Corbett, our assistant city attorney, for their tireless help with me on the election. They kept me together really, really well. I want to thank Mark, Jason, and Allison, too, for their support. Mark and Jason let me vent, and it was nice to feel comfortable being able to do that. Congratulations to each of you on your successful election, and we look forward to working with you over the next several years. And I can answer any questions you might have at this time.
Any questions?
Just a comment. I'd like to thank you guys for what you did. I know it's tiresome work in that you guys are not thanked enough for what you guys do, but, you know, on behalf of the city of Lancaster and everyone that was out there, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Wait a minute. And Britt, I want to just thank you... I think Mr. Molly wants to know who got the most votes.
No, I'm okay. I just want to know if I...
I know that.
I just wanted to win, that's all, but I want to thank you for putting up with me. You know, you put up with it a lot, so...
Thank you, thank you. We enjoyed it.
Thank you.
It's crazy. I personally really enjoyed this process. It does make me kind of insane, but it's a lot of fun.
You guys worked really hard. Thank you.
Thanks. And we can do the swearing in at this time, if you'd like?
Okay. I think we're having Ryan, Chris do...
Adopt the resolution. Oh, yes, we do need... You're right.
We should adopt the resolution first, and then we can do the swearing in.
I can't hear you. My hearing aid went out.
We should adopt the resolution first, and then we can do the swearing.
So, I'll make the motion to adopt resolution number 18-10.
Second that. Let's vote. It's unanimous. It passes. So, now we can swear them in, right? Ryan, you want to swear in your father?
Yes.
Okay.
He's probably wanting to swear. Swear amen.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Raise your right hand. Repeat after me. I, Marvin Crist...
I, Marvin Crist.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend...
That I will support and defend...
The Constitution of the United States...
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California...
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies...
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance...
That I will bear true faith and allegiance...
To the Constitution of the United States...
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California...
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely...
I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation...
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion...
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge...
I will well and faithfully discharge...
The duties upon which I'm about to enter.
The duties upon which I'm about to enter. Thank you.
No, I didn't really memorize it yet. I am truly honored to swear in Raj Molly. Raj Molly has worked tirelessly for the city from the day I got elected until now. Every job you've been assigned, you've done remarkably well, and you've had the courage to stand up to many of us when you thought you were right and we perhaps... Well, I wouldn't say wrong, but...
You gave me a chance. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Okay. I, Raj Molly...
I, Raj Molly.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution...
That I will support and defend the Constitution.
Of the United States...
Of the United States.
And the Constitution...
The Constitution.
Of the State of California...
The State of California.
Against all enemies...
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic...
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance...
That I bear truth, faith... I'm sorry.
That I will bear true faith...
I bear truth, bear...
Faith and allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the Constitution...
The Constitution.
Of the United States...
Of the United States.
And the Constitution...
And the Constitution.
Of the State of California...
Of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely...
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation...
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion...
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will...
That I will...
Well and faithfully...
Well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties...
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Which I am about to enter. Congratulations. Thank you so much.
So, do you have your speech ready?
I gave it three years ago, so... I just wanted to say thank you. Thank you for everybody being here, and Marvin, it was a great team. I love you, and he made it very easy for me, the entire election. Marvin, you made it happen. Thank you so much for your help, and thank you for here.
Okay, let's go to the city hall lobby, which is right over there. Right over there? That general direction, and we'll have a short celebration, and then we'll come back and finish the meeting. Okay? Everybody's welcome. Back to work.
We've been waiting for you.
We can move on.
Holding everybody up. You know, there's all these people out here that are getting paid, too, Mark.
This meeting's expensive, Mr. Bozigian.
You guys are getting paid.
Is that what you call it?
That's the best joke you've ever told.
Okay. Are we doing a distinguished budgeting award?
We are.
Okay. Yes, our finance director, Pam Statzman, will present it.
So, I'm pleased to present to you tonight the GFOA Distinguished Budget Award Presentation for Excellence in Preparing Our Annual Budget. It's for the current fiscal year, the 2018 budget, and this is really a culmination of efforts citywide. It's not just, you know, a document that the city manager and finance put together. We have a multitude of departments and individuals that help us get the budget to this point in time. I'd like to recognize first and foremost Toy Chisholm, who worked hand-in-hand with me last year. It was kind of our first real go-around at doing the budget together after Barbara had retired, and so Toy and I spent a lot of hours together, late nights, weekends, crunching numbers and getting the data compiled so that we could get it into the form that we could get it to you for approval, and took in to account all of the requests that were made by you and develop the budget. I would also like to recognize the budget officers from the different teams or the different departments. We have Marissa Diaz, who is from our capital division, and she took it upon herself to bring the capital program together, which is one very large component of the budget book. We also have budget officer Brenda Gamlowski from Public Safety last year, Britt Avery from City Clerk, Kathy DeFalco from Lancaster Choice Energy, Danielle Henry from Housing and Neighborhood Revitalization. We have here in the audience, I believe, Jeff Campbell and Nicole Jones, who are from Parks Recreation and Arts. We had Marissa Varela, who is hiding back in the corner over there. She represented administration, city manager, city attorney, communications, council, and economic development last year. We also have Monique Edwards, who recently left city employment, but she put the IT budget together. Robin Rector was a huge component of Development Services, getting that budget together. She compiles it from all the different divisions within Development Services. And then Terry Garner assisted with Human Resources. So, once we got all the data together, we compiled and crunched and prepared the end product, which was essentially solely through the efforts of two individuals, which is Jessica Haney, who works in finance, and Marissa Varela, who now works for Toy, who's no longer part of the city manager's office, but part of administration and community services. So, I just wanted to recognize everybody because it truly is a group effort to get it to the point where we can submit it for the award.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Marvin, you know you have to stay within the budget now.
Yes.
Thank you.
And you should have been down there to take a picture.
Should I have been down there to take a picture?
Pam loves pictures. Yes, I think a picture with the budget team would be appropriate.
They worked all hard to do it all year long.
And to get a prestigious award like that and not get...
Listen, whatever I'm supposed to do is in blue. If it's not in blue, I'm not supposed to do it.
Let me write it.
That's what they told me.
Let me write it.
It's too late. I feel like I've been sandbagged. Did you not put it... Did you leave it off just to embarrass me like this?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. City manager, anything to be removed?
No, sir.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Yes, no speaker cards. I'll make a motion. We approve M1.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. The consent calendar, I need to recuse myself on CC 11. Is that all?
There are a couple other items of note. With regard to CC 9...
Right. I have a conflict, Mayor Paris.
Correct.
In regards to street work, public street work...
It is located proximate to property owned by council member Mann. There is also work that is proximate to council member Crist and to you, Mr. Mayor. However, it is inside of the arterials within a neighborhood, and therefore it's staff recommendation that it is not a conflict requiring recusal.
Do you know what she said?
Yeah.
Yeah, that you're okay.
She said you should have been down there and kicked that too.
And finally, as to the consent calendar, for CC 11, moments before this council meeting began, we received an updated resolution. Copies are available in the back of the room, and it is on the dais for each of you to consider when you approve CC 11, which, Mr. Mayor, you're going to recuse yourself on.
Okay. I'll make a motion. We'll pull CC 9 and CC 11 and make a motion to approve the consent calendar as currently comprised pulling CC 11 and CC 9.
Second that. Let's vote. It's unanimous.
You want me to step out first with 9?
Yeah, go ahead and step out of 9. We'll do... I can do 9, right?
You're okay on 9. Yes.
Because I'm not a slumlord and own property all over the city, right?
I'll make a motion to approve CC 9.
Second that. Let's vote. What, wasn't I supposed to say you was a slumlord? Does it say that on your script?
You need to announce the vote.
Oh, it's unanimous. All right, I'm going to go up.
Okay.
What were you talking about?
Oh, were you? Okay. Won't be the first time, I suspect.
I'll move we approve CC 11.
I second that.
Let's vote. Motion carries 3-0 with Mayor Paris abstaining.
Ken, while you were gone, they were talking about your low-income rentals, but...
Really?
Especially the ones in Hawaii.
Oh, okay.
We need to go inspect them.
Okay. I did that intentionally because I was kind of hoping that the mayor wouldn't bag on me anymore about that.
Do you know me? So, Rhonda Perez, that was an amazing event this weekend. I was... It's the best one we've done. My hat's off to you. You got to talk into your microphone because my hearing aid battery went dead.
So, one of our supervisors in the Parks Department, Ephraq Carrera Jr., that was his baby this year. He really owned it, and we did some really cool things this year, so hats off to him.
We did. It was great. Thank you. New business.
No speaker cards.
Shall we waive the staff report? Any reason to go forward with it? You haven't been practicing, have you? I mean, I...
I'll move we adopt resolution number 01-18.
I will second that motion.
All in favor? I mean, let's vote. I'll get this down before I retire. It's unanimous.
I'm taking bets.
You guys are bad.
Well, I'm kind of fighting the curve, you know?
Yeah.
These guys are bad.
Okay, NB item 1. I got to recuse myself because I... No, I don't.
NB 2.
Okay. So, 1 I'm okay with. All right. Now, I noticed that you're calling it a hotel stimulus program. Isn't that just a fancy way of saying you're raising the taxes or...
No.
No.
No? Okay.
No.
incentivizing in the absence of redevelopment, being creative and adaptive.
Whoa.
Sounds like a scam.
Shannon, you're up.
Let's vote. Is this a scam?
Well, with that introduction, Mayor Paris, council members, I'm here to present a new ordinance for you, the Hotel Stimulus Program, for your consideration. Transient occupancy tax is a key part of the city's budget. Our Destination Lancaster Hotels, as Ken Mann, being on the board, can attest to, generate approximately 1.8 million a year in transient occupancy tax, and that's just the Destination Lancaster Hotels alone. We have increasing demand as time goes on. The aerospace contracts have been a huge demand, generated huge demand for our hotel rooms. We also have a demand generated by our Parks Department with our soccer and softball tournaments on the weekends. So, those are our two key generators, and as both of those increase, we have lower and lower numbers of hotel rooms available. In fact, recently, they were looking at holding a small conference for CCAs, and we simply weren't able to find the rooms locally to do it. It's not uncommon when there's a tournament or some big event for people to be staying as far away as Santa Clarita. So, we would like to capture that revenue here locally. We also, with Urban 3, has done some analysis recently for us about fiscal resiliency, and what they've found is that the higher density, the development, the greater value is generated over the long term for the community. We haven't had high-density developments in the Amel Valley region. Because land is so cheap and available, it is much easier to build with an ocean of parking around you in a low-density environment. So, what we're looking to do is marry these two concepts of the demand for hotels and the high density and create a stimulus program that will help stimulate the type of development that generates greater revenue for the city over the long term. So, that's what this program does. You have to be, in order to qualify, you have to qualify as an upscale or better hotel on the Smith Travel Reports chain scales, and that's an industry standard for the hotel industry. You also have to have AAA III diamond rating or better. It's similar to the... That is actually the qualification we use for Destination Lancaster Hotels as well. In addition to these, which are a fairly high barrier to entry, you have to have 110 rooms per acre if you are a limited-service hotel, or 90 rooms per acre if you're full-service, meaning you would incorporate restaurant facilities and banquet facilities or meeting space on-site. So, this is what we are proposing. We will hope to generate new jobs, new tax revenues, in terms of both property tax and transient occupancy tax through this program. Available for any questions.
So, like four-star, five-star, three-star?
Yes. So, the... As far as upscale or better, we have two existing in the market. Homewood Suites and Spring Hill are the two in Lancaster that would qualify under this. The proposed Marriott Residence Inn here in downtown would qualify under this program. So, while those two meet the flag requirements, they wouldn't meet the density requirements. So, on the horizon, we do see that the Marriott Residence Inn would qualify. That's an example that would qualify under this program.
Okay, good. Terrific. Oh, Fran. Fran, you've been on the commission now for about six months, and we still have a homeless problem. What's going on?
He got me this morning.
I'm going to bite my tongue. Never mind.
Well, good evening, mayor, vice mayor, council members, staff, ladies and gentlemen, my friend Sarah Saris. I still can't talk to her. First of all, I want to congratulate and welcome you back, Vice Mayor Chris and Council Molly. Thank you very much, and I'm looking forward to working with all of you again in the coming years, God willing.
So, Fran, what do you think the reason for the disparity in the vote count was?
You're putting me on the spot.
What?
I guess...
I think Raj worked very, very hard.
No, you...
I think he was very, very diligent, and he was...
They both are.
But Raj worked very hard on his campaign. We both worked, but he did exceptional work.
I'm sorry. I thought your name was Fran.
I just threw my voice over there. No, but it was a tight race, and I'm happy. Thank you. On this... I'm probably not knowing what I'm talking about, which is not unusual, on the NB1 Hotel Stimulus Program. This is...
Thank you. City manager, anything to be removed?
No, sir.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Yes, no speaker cards. I'll make a motion and we approve M1.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. The consent calendar, I need to recuse myself on CC 11. Is that all?
There are a couple of other items of note. With regard to CC 9...
Right, I have a conflict, Mayor Perez.
Correct.
In regards to street work, public street work.
It is located proximate to a property owned by Councilmember Mann. There is also work that is proximate to Councilmember Chris and to you, Mr. Mayor. However, it is inside of the arterials within a neighborhood and therefore it's staff recommendation that it is not a conflict requiring recusal.
Do you know what she said?
Yeah.
Yeah, that you're okay.
She said you should have been down there and kicked that.
And finally, as to the consent calendar, for CC 11, moments before this council meeting began, we received an updated resolution. Copies are available in the back of the room and it is on the dais for each of you to consider when you approve CC 11, which, Mr. Mayor, you're going to recuse yourself on.
Okay, I'll make a motion. We'll pull CC 9 and CC 11 and make a motion to approve the consent calendar as currently comprised pulling CC 11 and CC 9.
Second that. Let's vote. It's unanimous.
You want me to step out first with 9?
Yeah, go ahead and step out of 9. We'll do a... I can do 9, right?
You're okay on 9. Yes.
Because I'm not a slumlord and own property all over the city, right?
I'll make a motion to approve CC 9.
Second that. Let's vote. What, wasn't I supposed to say you was a slumlord? Does it say that on your script?
You need to announce the vote.
Oh, it's unanimous. All right, I'm gonna go out.
Okay.
We were talking about it.
Oh, really? Okay, won't be the first time, I suspect.
I'll move we approve CC 11.
I second that.
Let's vote. Motion carries 3-0 with Mayor Perez abstaining.
Ken, while you were gone, they were talking about your low-income rentals, but...
Really?
Especially the ones in Hawaii.
Oh, okay.
We need to go inspect them.
Okay. I did that intentionally because I was kind of hoping that the mayor wouldn't bag on me anymore about that.
Do you know me? So, Rhonda Perez, that was an amazing event this weekend. I was... It's the best one we've done. My hat's off to you. You gotta talk into your microphone because my hearing aid battery went dead.
So, one of our supervisors in the Parks Department, Efra Carrera Jr., that was his baby this year. He really owned it and he did some really cool things this year, so hats off to him.
He did. It was great. Thank you. New business.
No speaker cards.
Shall we waive the staff report? Any reason to go forward with it? You haven't been practicing, have you? I mean, I...
I'll move we adopt resolution number 01-18.
I will second that motion.
All in favor? I mean, let's vote. I'll get this down before I retire. It's unanimous.
I'm taking bets.
You guys are bad.
Well, I'm kind of fighting the curve, you know?
These guys are bad.
Okay, NB item 1, I gotta recuse myself because I...
No, NB 2.
Okay, so 1 I'm okay with. All right. Now, I noticed that you're calling it a hotel stimulus program. Isn't that just a fancy way of saying you're raising the taxes or...
No.
No?
No. incentivizing in the absence of redevelopment, being creative and adaptive.
Whoa.
Sounds like a scam.
Shannon, you're up.
Let's vote. Is this a scam?
Well, with that introduction, Mayor Perez, council members, I'm here to present a new ordinance for you, the Hotel Stimulus Program, for your consideration. Transient occupancy tax is a key part of the city's budget. Our Destination Lancaster Hotels, as Ken Mann, being on the board, can attest to, generate approximately 1.8 million a year in transient occupancy tax, and that's just the Destination Lancaster Hotels alone. We have increasing demand as time goes on. The aerospace contracts have been a huge demand, generated huge demand for our hotel rooms. We also have a demand generated by our Parks Department with our soccer and softball tournaments on the weekends. So, those are our two key generators, and as both of those increase, we have lower and lower numbers of hotel rooms available. In fact, recently, they were looking at holding a small conference for CCAs, and we simply weren't able to find the rooms locally to do it. It's not uncommon when there's a tournament or some big event for people to be staying as far away as Santa Clarita. So, we would like to capture that revenue here locally. We also, with Urban 3, has done some analysis recently for us about fiscal resiliency, and what they've found is that the higher density, the development, the greater value is generated over the long term for the community. We haven't had high-density developments in the Amel Valley region. Because land is so cheap and available, it is much easier to build with an ocean of parking around you in a low-density environment. So, what we're looking to do is marry these two concepts of the demand for hotels and the high-density and create a stimulus program that will help stimulate the type of development that generates greater revenue for the city over the long term. So, that's what this program does. You have to be, in order to qualify, you have to qualify as a upscale or better hotel on the Smith Travel Reports chain scales, and that's an industry standard for the hotel industry. You also have to have AAA 3 diamond rating or better. It's similar to the... That is actually the qualification we use for Destination Lancaster Hotels as well. In addition to these, which are a fairly high barrier to entry, you have to have 110 rooms per acre if you are a limited-service hotel, or 90 rooms per acre if you're full-service, meaning you would incorporate restaurant facilities and banquet facilities or meeting space on-site. So, this is what we are proposing. We will hope to generate new jobs, new tax revenues, in terms of both property tax and transient occupancy tax through this program. Available for any questions.
So, like, four-star, five-star, three-star?
Yes, so the... As far as upscale or better, we have two existing in the market. Homewood Suites and Spring Hill are the two in Lancaster that would qualify under this. The proposed Marriott Residence Inn here in downtown would qualify under this program. So, while those two meet the flag requirements, they wouldn't meet the density requirements. So, on the horizon, we do see that the Marriott Residence Inn would qualify. That's an example that would qualify under this program.
Okay, good. Terrific. Fran. Fran, you've been on the commission now for about six months, and we still have a homeless problem. What's going on?
He got me this morning.
I'm gonna bite my tongue, never mind.
Well, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, staff, ladies and gentlemen, my friend, Sarah Saris, I still can't talk to her. First of all, I want to congratulate and welcome you back, Vice Mayor Chris and Councilman Nolly. Thank you very much, and I'm looking forward to working with all of you again in the coming years, God willing.
So, Fran, what do you think the reason for the disparity in the vote count was?
You're putting me on the spot.
What?
I guess...
I think Raj worked very, very hard.
No, you...
I think he was very, very diligent and he was...
They both are. You both are.
Raj worked very hard on his campaign. We both worked, but he did exceptional work.
I'm sorry, I thought your name was Fran.
I just threw my voice over there. No, but it was a tight race and I'm happy. Thank you. On this... I'm probably not knowing what I'm talking about, which is not unusual, on the NB 1 Hotel Stimulus Program. This is a good program and I like it, but I'm still, and I've mentioned this before to you, Vice Mayor Chris, about having more retail sales here in Lancaster, and I know you mentioned it before, that Lancaster is more in the process of generating jobs. And I also mentioned, that's great, that's what we need, but we also need a place for our people to go shopping so that when we have our own mall and shopping areas, that also generates tax money for us, does it not?
It does, but it's a difference in philosophy that the two cities have, that our philosophy is that we're going after the jobs rather than just the retail. Other cities spend millions and millions of dollars to attract the retail, and then they end up going out of business because everyone's buying it on the internet.
Right.
So, it's exponentially going up every year as far as the purchases on the internet. So, we think our mainstay is jobs, and that's what we're focusing on right now.
Okay, okay. Maybe I didn't... Because you mentioned that to me before, but I guess I didn't...
So, Fran, if I may speak...
Yes.
I'm not trying to interrupt, but if you listen closely to what Vice Mayor said, unfortunately, we're in a changing time with retail, and as leaders, it's very responsible for us to continue that pathway of focusing on jobs. As much as I know that there's been lots of people within the city of Lancaster ask us about retail, right now, it is, if you just read the trades, it is a total mess. And you... Today, in the paper, you know, Sears is, you know, teetering in and out of bankruptcy. You know, there's just a big shift today in retail, and for us to make a decision to try to focus strictly on trying to generate a retail center as a way to prosperity, in my book, I think we're on the right track just to stay focused on jobs.
Okay, I just, you know, I just... I guess I didn't have it clear in my mind, and I agree with you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Fran.
Talk to you guys later. No, I mean, I have... Later on.
We should have that discussion sometime because I... It doesn't make sense that certainly we're focusing on jobs, we now have a labor shortage, but the issue is generating income for the city. And what we should be focusing on is the recognition that sales tax is no longer a suitable vehicle to prosperity to the city, and we should be investing, literally having an ownership interest in the companies that come to the city that we then promote and make successful. But that requires a whole change in the model of how we're doing things, and we are not moving fast enough in that direction. We are still bringing in companies and we're not insisting on an ownership interest for the various incentives we give them for coming. But every time I discuss it with them, there doesn't seem to be a lot of resistance to the idea because they kind of like the idea that we're doing it as a partnership and we will work towards their success. But if there's a failing in doing this model, it lies with us in not embracing it. And so, am I making myself clear? I would like a plan in place within the next 180 days that works diligently towards that model. But if we do not find a way to bring income into the city coffers and sit around waiting for the sales tax to catch up that is never coming back, you know, how many dealerships, auto dealerships can we bring into the city? Because if we didn't have them, we would be broke, right? If Costco were to decide to move, we would be bankrupt. Isn't that accurate? Or am I wrong about that?
No, you're wrong.
Well, okay, you tell me where the income's coming if it's not the car dealerships in Costco, because it sure isn't JCPenney's anymore, is it?
We have Lancaster Choice Energy, we have our different franchise...
Lancaster Choice Energy has not made a profit yet.
Not yet, but that's...
It will, but not yet.
That's why we are positioning ourselves...
So, tell me what great plan you have to create income for this city if it's not sales tax?
I think...
Because that's the only thing I hear from any of you.
No, that's... It is the... I agree with what you're saying. I agree with the premise. The only thing different is that we've set up so many different layers. The Lancaster Choice Energy is a good example of us being able to offer those benefits to entice other businesses here. So, we can... We've set all those up and it's taken us...
But what benefit is it to us, give them an incentive in lower power rates to locate here if we're not getting a piece of their profits? Why is that... How is that something that's going to benefit us other than just jobs? What?
Want me to?
Yes.
I think, I agree with the premise you say, and we have been diligently trying to pursue some of that. There are companies that, for various reasons, stockholders may not be able to give ownership, so we try to then de facto take something else, which is a share of the profits. In terms of like TOT, the hotel, we share the risk and share the profit and such, but there are some times they don't. We also do not append 100% on sales tax, but you're 100% right in that if something happened, like you just said, we would have to cut services. But we know those things are coming. Autonomous vehicles will reduce the sale of cars as we know it. So, we're looking at other revenue sources to make sure. Right now, Jason and his team are looking at things like, how do we use our current infrastructure to be smart infrastructure and make money on Wi-Fi or to attract companies with paying maybe a monthly rent for hooking up to Lancaster?
180 days, I want a plan in place that makes sense, that has reasonable projections and a reasonable growth rate to it, all right?
You got it.
Thank you. Oh, I'm on a roll. What can I say? The bed tax, Palmdale's still higher than us?
No, no.
Yes.
Yes, they are.
Yes, they are.
If you... You're talking about as a percentage?
They're either higher or they're not.
They're... My... I believe, and Shannon can correct me, that Palmdale has a higher TOT than Lancaster.
That's correct.
Right?
They have a higher percentage. They're collecting a greater percentage of the gross than we are.
That's what I meant.
Right.
I mean, what do we get? We're actually collecting more money, is that what you're saying?
If we raised our rates to them, we're beating them out on, at least my last understanding from a standpoint, that's... We're running a good footrace and beating them at it without having a higher tax rate.
So, why don't we raise the tax rate and invest it back into the hotels?
We already did that.
We are doing it.
We have a T-bid, which does do that, that's on top of it. You can raise, if you want, you can raise the TOT as well too and invest in whatever you want.
I just don't see the benefit to us having a lower bed tax rate than Palmdale.
One of the things we promised the hotels for the first five years, I think it was, and we've hit that, was that we would not raise the TOT if they were to support a... The T-bid, which is Destination Lancaster funding. That five years has come and gone, and we'd be happy to look at what our TOT is and how we could raise it.
Yeah. Mayor, we... Just at the last meeting, when you hear the hotels say, "We're sold out now on the weekends," I mean, Monday through Friday, they're doing extremely well. We have at a point where there's no vacancies. But we've had now, we're taking those dollars and spending them to generate tourism and to lure people in on the weekends to get that, those empty beds filled up. We've been very successful with those dollars. So, it behooves us to continue to woo more hotels to the city of Lancaster so that we can continue to generate...
Well, all I'm saying is, can't we do... Aren't we more likely to be able to do that if we had financial incentives for them to do it that would come off a bed tax? That's certainly not going to be... Have a competition problem with Palmdale if theirs is higher, right?
Right.
So, when can we have that ready to roll out? See if we want to do it.
We're giving them incentives currently through...
Okay, but stay on the bed tax.
I am. I would like to see us put the infrastructure into place. So, what then the infrastructure is, what we're trying to do with AVA, QMD, and AVTA is we're putting in the charging stations at the hotels.
Hotels.
And then we're giving them the vans to move it back and forth. So, the incentive is there, the infrastructure, and then we can move forward with, because we're giving them the financial incentives and the infrastructure that's in place. So, once we get that into place, then I would agree with you.
Well, why the delay? Why... I don't... All I'm asking is to understand.
Well, we have to get the grants and the infrastructure.
No, no, no. I mean, what is the disincentive to the hotels if we raise it to match Palmdale?
There is no, in my opinion, there is no disincentive. The five years just passed, they just, six months ago or so, re-upped their T-bid, which is Destination Lancaster, and we can have a report to you by the second meeting in May on what it would take to raise the TOT.
Yeah.
It's a simple...
And I can bring it up at the next meeting. We have a leadership change, I believe. I'm back as chairman again, so we rotate. I can bring it up.
With who?
Destination Lancaster.
At Destination Lancaster, because you want the buy-in of all the hotels, Mayor.
Well, I don't see the hotels wanting to raise their taxes.
Yeah, but... And that's a phenomenon, because usually when somebody books a room, my opinion, usually when you book the room, you know, usually you don't go look at what the tax is. You book the room on the hotel rate, then you see the tax, and I...
And the reason we do it is because it's not our citizens that have to pay it.
Correct.
We can have it to you by the second meeting in May. Councilmember Mann is correct in that you should at least consult with the hotels so they know and they can input it, but it's not their decision.
Right.
I recall that when we didn't do it, when Palmdale did it, it was because of a philosophical bent of not wanting to raise taxes no matter what. It was a different council, remember?
Oh, yeah, yes. It was a different council.
But it made no economic sense, and I think we just ought to correct it or at least look at it.
Yeah, I truly believe too. I think you're correct.
Good, thanks.
Okay, I'll move to introduce ordinance 1042.
I'll second that.
Let's vote. Okay, so, NB 2, I gotta recuse myself because...
Yes.
I guess... Oh, this is my office, isn't it?
It is, yes. It is near property you own.
We have no speaker cards.
Well, if that's the case, then I'll make a... I'll make a recommendation to approve the proposal rental agreement between the city of Lancaster and Sully 3 AVP LLC.
I second that.
We have a motion and a second. Let's vote. We have three yes votes with Mayor Perez abstaining.
You're going to be the new guy again if you don't pay attention.
When does he not become the new guy?
Toy showed up.
I was just telling Fran that you weren't calling me the new guy anymore. I guess I jinxed that. All right, so this is an exciting time of the year for Development Services and actually the committee to give the council and the committee an update on the Revive 25 program. Just to remind the community, the Revive 25 program is a commitment that the city council made 2015 to spend $100 million in order to touch every single road in the city of Lancaster and improve them, whether it's flurry seals or reconstruction. We've been doing that since 2015. Somebody this morning actually says, the manager, so hopefully he'll be okay with this, but he said, "See, Lancaster's under construction," and I think the committee can see that. And so, that's a good problem to have. There's things that we have to make sure we're diligent on with outreach and business outreach. But again, when you're driving around the city now, you'll see massive improvements to our roadways, our sidewalks, our medians, and who's doing that? Well, that's Development Services' central focus on making sure that we're implementing that program for the city council and the community. The leadership of that is Marisa Diaz, the capital engineering manager, Mike Livingston, our senior construction manager, and Luis Garabe, our senior projects coordinator. So, I'm going to turn it over to them to give you the details of what we've been doing and what we're going to be doing. So, Marisa?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, I'm happy to share with you some of the progress of the Revive 25 program, much of which is covered in the report that all of you should have in front of you. The Revive 25 report will be available for residents in hard copy and electronically, which they'll be able to download via our website. It was about a year ago now since we last provided an update, so we'll go over some of the specific projects that have been completed since we were last here and provide a quick overview of projects currently under construction, projects that will go to construction later this year, and those currently in design, which will go to construction over the next two to three years. I'd like to remind all that Revive 25 is much more than just fixing the roads. It means making some significant changes internally in order to reach our goal. It requires a major shift in philosophy, requiring us to...
Slow down. I'm old and I have trouble understanding you when you speak fast.
Honestly, that's actually very slow for me, so I'll try to take it down a little bit for you.
Thank you.
It requires a major shift in philosophy, requiring us to invest more in pavement preservation treatments rather than remove and replace, also known as road reconstruction. It also presents the perfect opportunity to make our streets safer for everyone, allowing us to implement different aspects of our complete streets program into each project that we do. It means that we need to invest more in project design and engineering in the first couple of years of the program so that we have as many shovel-ready projects as possible. This allows us to leverage road funds as soon as they are available through grants or other funding sources. It also means that we need to focus more time and energy on education and community outreach. With all the road construction expected over the next several years, we know that we need to do a much better job communicating with residents and businesses as projects come online. As you know, staff has been charged with a large task, less than 10 years to cover more than 1,700 lane miles of road in Lancaster. That's the distance from Lancaster to Chicago. But we've made some good progress so far. We're currently on track to treat more than 500 lane miles by the end of this year. That's approximately 30% of our goal to treat all 1,700 lane miles by 2025. So, as you'll see, the next seven years are going to be extremely busy with road improvement projects. To provide a little more insight on some of the road construction projects that we have been completed and what the new few years of projects look like, I'd like to introduce Mike Livingston, our senior construction manager.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Perez, Council. I'm going to walk you through the... Since the last time we gave the Revive 25 update, our staff's been able to complete some very critical projects. And as you can see from the map, we have areas that are currently completed, which include 40th Street West between Avenue L and Avenue K, the city's portion of Avenue L from 52nd Street West to 55th, Lancaster Boulevard from Division to Sierra Highway, and Lancaster Boulevard from 30th to 40th Street East, which all have been reconstructed and completed. Now, also on the map here, you'll notice that we have some projects that are currently under construction. Those include 10th Street West from Avenue L to Avenue M, 10th Street West from Avenue K, 20th Street West from Avenue J to the Boulevard, and also 20th Street West from Avenue I to the Boulevard. The good news is, is most of these projects are expected to be completed in May of this year. Construction in... As Marissa alluded to, as we ramped up with this project, past construction totals in the year 1516 totaled $3.7 million, and then construction in 1617 totaled $3.9, bringing us here to date for fiscal year 1718, construction totaling $11.7 million. So, we are at work and we are moving. That means in the last year, capital construction has increased more than three times. That means in the last year, capital construction has increased more than three times the amount in the two previously, two previous years, while staffing levels have remained relatively unchanged. For the capital construction side, their productivity has increased threefold. So I wanted to show you a picture here of 20th Street West and Avenue J to the Boulevard. Now I know this, a lot of questions that I receive from business owners and residents is, come on, Mike, what, what's going on here? These roads, when you come in, and.
Well, they kinda have a point, don't they?
Right, so when, when you take a look, and I don't want to use the red dot, but you can obviously apparently see the old road. This road was built in the 1940s.
Wow.
Okay? This road's lasted 70 years through our pavement maintenance and preservation program and our commitment from council, 70 years, that's unheard of.
Ken, that was built about the time you were born.
So.
Yeah, and you were there, what, 10 years before this?
So that's really, that's really a tribute to our maintenance program and, and how we do care for streets, but as you can see, it's time, it's, it's time for reconstruction. And one of the issues we run into is over that 70 years, there's other infrastructure, other infrastructure that's been put in place that we constantly have to battle with, right? We also, we have to deal with the traveling public and keeping businesses open and educating the, educating both the council and the, and the citizens as to why it takes so long, because most of the time, they, they want you to come in, be in and out, grind an overlay, stripe it, pave it black, don't look back, right? The issue with that, the issue with that is those roads only last 10 to 15 years. Okay, so when we come in and we do a reconstruction, when we go in and do maintenance, it's on a seven-year program, and we expect to get a life cycle of a road to 70 years. The, one of the things we learned on several of these projects, 10th Street West and 20th, as construction is ramped up, and again, we are doing three times the work that we've done in the past, we've, we've come to an understanding that we need to get better at communicating not only with the business owners but the residents. So what we've done is we've, we've implemented a construction area sign program with all of our, with all of our projects, where we'll go out and we'll put construction area signs and we notify the public that the business is open. We go, we go through the standard means to communication through the newspaper, road updates, Facebook page, all that good stuff. But one of the things that we do, that we're focusing on now even more, and you'll see that with the Avenue I, I project, as that kicks off, is we've implemented a boots-on-the-ground approach. So as we go in, prior to the start of a construction project, they will see one of the, one of myself, the project manager, or the city inspectors at their business to give them an update for the duration of the project, how long a driveway may be opened or closed, a road may be open or closed, right down to when we're gonna schedule a, a signal blackout. The reason why we're doing that is so that they have a full understanding of what we're doing. Everybody's paying taxes, everybody wants to see their roads fixed, they wanna see parks, they wanna see public safety, and these are the things that we're, we're trying to focus on as a city, those are the directives that you've given us, that's the mission that you've given us, and we continue to move forward in trying to preserve and build a road that'll last 70 years. So moving on to the future, there's 240 lane miles that are currently in design. Some of the arterials include 10th West from J to Lancaster Boulevard, 30th, 30th East from K to Avenue L and K8, and some neighborhoods. As you can see, the neighborhoods are shaded in the light yellow areas, where we're actually gonna go in and remediate within the residential areas, okay? That also, this also includes all of our SB1 funding. So as the taxpayers begin to feel it at the pump, now they're gonna see it in return right in front of their homes, and that's one of the, again, that's one of our missions, our mission statements that we carry internally, is that we're here to serve the taxpayer, we're here to be transparent, and we're here to deliver. We're not gonna, we're not trying to inflate, over-design, or do anything, do, do anything of that nature to stall out the movement of the taxpayer dollars back to where they can see it and hold on to it and know that we're taking care of them. This map does include the five major Measure R projects, but I didn't include that in any of the, any of the construction numbers, but as you can see with the longer yellow lines up here, as we go in and we do these road projects, we're also implementing and getting connectivity with our Complete Streets. So all of these will tie in with Complete Streets, we're, we're doing ADA upgrades to all the handicap ramps, and we're also looking at various sidewalk programs and gap closure programs that are included. And with that, I'll turn the remainder of the presentation over to Luis Garabé, and he'll discuss pavement preservation.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
You briefly went over it, but the Measure R stuff, so this is not inclusive of the Measure R funding, which is the freeways and 600 feet down on each way, and we're spending $60 million on it?
Yes, sir, we're spending $60 million on that, that'll be 2020 to 2024, that'll be that timeframe. Currently, in the next two years, we have slated $17.5 million to go in, that's in these design projects, based on the council's decision to move forward and steering the budget in that direction.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Good evening. So as Mike has mentioned, there's several streets throughout the city that are gonna require complete reconstruction, but our long-term goal continues to be to invest more in preventive maintenance, to help preserve these roads and before they get to that critical point. Now, we've talked at that length about some of the advantages of investing more in pavement preservation, and moving forward, it's gonna actually be more important for us to do so because we are actually anticipating that the costs for labor and road materials to go up over the next couple of years. You know, with the influx of new funding created through SB1 and Measure R, we've essentially, cities across the county and the state now have a new pool of money to kind of go off of, to, to fund new road projects. So in talking with some contractors and even some of our material suppliers, that increase demand is gonna, is gonna create what we're anticipating about a 10 and 15% increase in cost, which is why we have to continue to be and find more ways to be more efficient about what we're doing, and to, to make the most of the available road funds that we have today so that we maximize the number of lane miles that we treat each year. One of the ways that we're doing that is through our Neighborhood Fog Seal Program. Now, back in the 2000s, as most of you know, the city experienced a boom of new housing development, and with that new development came a lot of brand-new, new roads in the community. Today, those roads are still in pretty good shape, but they're reaching that critical tipping point where if we don't do something about it, the cost to, to treat that road is gonna go up substantially. So through this program, we're, we're going out, applying a fog seal, a fog seal project, which one, helps rejuvenate the existing asphalt, and then helps seal some of those minor cracks. Our, our construction, our, our maintenance crews actually go in afterwards, and we'll seal the larger cracks that weren't covered by that initial treatment. Now, the best thing about these projects is that we can do these at very little cost and at very minimal disruption to the residents in these neighborhoods, and I think most importantly is that, is that it really helps freeze, freezes time for us, because now we can go out and do, handle other road projects that need more assistance, and come back in three or four years, and essentially, that pavement will still be in the same condition that it was before we applied that treatment. Now, these types of projects are, are never gonna get the front page of the paper kind of attention, but they're crucial if we're serious about reaching our, our Revive 2025 goal. Now, as Mike made, mentioned, we have, I think it's over 30 major road construction projects happening in Lancaster over the next few years, and our small staff is gonna be extremely busy making sure that those projects go to construction. But we obviously need to start planning today for the future projects, to make sure that it's a seamless process so that we continue to have these shovel-ready projects. So in order to do that, the city's actually going to be working with pavement, pavement engineering to help us with that process. Now, pavement engineering has over 30 years' experience working with municipalities across the state, specifically on pavement management programs like ours. Now, they'll be helping us essentially gather a lot of data, they'll evaluate some of the road treatments that we've done in the past, and they'll help us create kind of an inventory of information that we'll use to help develop the next phases of the Revive 25 program. Now, as Marissa mentioned earlier, you know, Revive 25 is much more than just fixing the roads. Last year, we launched our Summer Sidewalk Program, which was, which was hugely successful. This award-winning program allowed us to tackle some of the, the huge backlog of concrete repairs throughout the city that, that needed to be addressed, and now in July, we'll be actually going to construction on a new set of projects that's basically almost gonna triple the number of, of locations and work that we did as part of the 2017 program. Now, between these two projects and with the hard work of our maintenance crews, we will have almost eliminated essentially a three-year backlog of concrete projects that we had, so that today, if somebody calls to report a sidewalk issue that needs to be repaired, our crews will be able to go out there within a matter of weeks to make that, those necessary repairs. Now, as a part of the Revive 25 program, we also take every opportunity we can to educate and inform the community about what we're doing. We use opportunities like our Public Works Community Day to teach kids and, quite honestly, parents too, how to safely navigate through a roundabout. Now, just a quick side note for all of you, since that roundabout was constructed on L and Challenger Way, we've had 60% fewer accidents at that intersection, and more importantly, we've actually had zero injury or fatal accidents. Now, in the three years before the construction of that.
You know, you could put your mayor out of business that way.
Sorry, sir. We'll find something else, we'll. Yeah, we'll screw up something else, yeah. Now, and now, in the, the three years prior, leading up, before the construction, there actually had been 10, so again, we're, you can actually see the, the impact that those kind of projects are having out in the community. Now, since the last time we.
So, so why aren't we expanding that program faster? I mean, that's, those are, that's incredible statistics, especially for that particular intersection. That intersection was a killer.
Well, there are, there are two roundabouts that are currently in design and are set to go to construction fairly quickly.
They'll be under, we'll be advertising them in May, I think it is. In June, we'll be advertising, and they'll both be going out for construction by the end of the year. That's 15th West and 15th East on Lancaster Boulevard, which are two other high accident locations.
Shouldn't, shouldn't we be looking at an ordinance that just makes it mandatory? All new intersections or roundabouts? Why are you laughing at me?
It wasn't.
Well, Marvin, some of us are concerned about the health and well-being of our citizens. Some of us think that it's important people not get killed in highway traffic accidents unnecessarily, and I'm sure you do too.
Who might that be?
What, what we can do, like an example, is Caltrans, Caltrans on every project they do has to look at roundabouts, for example, at interchanges to see if that's an appropriate treatment, and we do, for everything that we're doing, look for roundabouts. Some of the newer projects that are coming forward do have roundabouts, a lot of roundabouts in them, both residential and commercial.
Luis, I know, the future statistics, I'd like to see the traffic count prior to and the traffic count.
Traffic flow, yeah, absolutely.
You know, afterwards, because I'm hearing a lot of people just don't use it because of it's a roundabout, they don't understand it.
Absolutely, and it's actually something that we were, as we're planning on evaluating because we get the same things.
So those statistics might be skewed a little bit, you know, by that.
Sure.
Pull this, pull the Switters for the last 10 years and see. Now, he's right, you do gotta account for the, for the.
Sure.
Traffic count, but that's an easy calculation to make, and let's find out.
Absolutely. So the last time we were here, about a year ago, we talked about trying to get, do more to get the word out in the community. Since that point, we've essentially been in every Outlook magazine, that's mailed out to every resident in, in Lancaster, explaining to them some of the different projects that we're working on. We also, as projects get ready to go to construction, as Mike alluded to a little bit, we're doing a lot more to help get the word out to residents and using the various platforms at our disposal to make sure residents know that projects are coming with, with some, with advance warning so that they can get, and make the necessary changes. And actually, as part of our neighborhood, our Residential Fog Seal Program, we're actually even taking it a step further in delivering letters to the residents so that they understand as much as possible about the project, how it's gonna impact them. And again, the, the great thing about some of these neighborhood projects is that we're able to get in and out in the one day, so a lot of people, they leave to work, they don't even see it, they come back, and there's, their neighborhood has been treated and won't need anything for a few years. And as always, our Revive 25 website continues to be a valuable tool of all things Revive 25, including project maps, information about what's happening, costs, traffic closures, and all that good stuff that provide, involve our roads. So with that, I continue to invite you and the entire community to continue to follow the Revive 25 journey at abetterroadahead.com, and with that, I'd be more than happy, or we'd be more than happy to answer any questions.
Luis, we, we have a concern about you violating child labor laws.
Just don't tell her mom. It'll be okay.
I, I, I hope we paid her for this.
We, we pay her parents well.
Yeah.
She eats well.
We could start building her resume, she's now a model.
Well, she's on our Public Works Community Day sign too.
I guarantee Luis has already built that resume.
Luis, I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
Where are we at with the Sierra Highway, Avenue K, north?
Sierra Highway, Avenue K, north, we were putting in a sidewalk? Oh, okay, by the bowling alley, right?
Yeah. We're currently looking, right now, at, at scheduling the completion of that project by the end of May. So right now, we're currently working with contractors to, to issue a change order to move forward in the process of getting that completed.
That's right. There's, there's, to be clear too, there's a longer-term project that's about a year and a half or two years out, but we're not gonna wait for that, so we're gonna do a temporary sidewalk that will work, as Mike said.
Good.
We're working on, there's three property owners to get right away, if we don't get the right away, then we'll go in the existing right away.
I think it's important that, we do like input, and someone from the audience did come in and request that, and they looked at that, and I think that's, it's, it's important because we do listen.
Make sure we follow up with him.
Yes, I think Jeff spoke to him today, and I really commend Jeff and his team because they took that from the moment it happened in the council meeting and ran with it, and it's unheard of to get something done that quickly with dealing with property owners, so thank you for that.
And can we get a, when you do those maps on there, can we have a, what's being funded by SB1, where's Measure R, Measure M, and, you know, it color-coded so we can see?
Yes, sir, we'll take care of that. Also, for the citizens, I skipped over it in my notes here, but I think it's important, on our construction area signs, we do have a construction hotline, so any questions like that or any concerns that come up, then feel free to call in. It's, the phone number is 661-945-6862, you'll see it on this, all the signs, and we definitely will return your phone call, you will hear, hear from somebody from the city.
Okay. And. Do you remember that woman that sent me a, a message on Facebook about Lancaster Boulevard and the bike lane, and we were gonna have somebody contact her?
I vaguely remember, I think we did, it was a few months ago.
Yeah, she sent me another message saying nobody contacted her.
I'm almost positive we did, but if you send it to me, I'll contact her personally tomorrow, but I, I remember the incident, I believe we did.
All right, I think we at least ought to get back to them.
Mark, I believe this is the, the long line striping on Avenue I?
No, this is Lancaster Boulevard, it's a bike lane issue, I remember the issue. We'll look into it, I think.
Some problem with being able to leave their driveway now because of the bike lane and.
Yeah, it had to do with being, coming in and out, and it was really an explanation of you can use the bike lane as a D-cell and an acceleration lane, that's why I remember that.
You mean, I can use that lane to pass people?
You use, you use everything to pass people, I've driven.
I just asked.
And, Mark, I think this is a good time to, we talked about that ordinance in December of making sure no roadwork was being done on that, we talked about it earlier, can you go through that?
Sure, and I compliment, Marissa, who's our Capitol Manager, showed me a schedule for the next three years, she's laid out every Capitol project so that we can make sure during, between Thanksgiving, Black Friday, and Christmas, the roads are open. What we came up with, and I think Jeff.
What we came up with, and I think Jeff's staff, is that we're going to make it a condition of every encroachment permit in the right of way, whether it's us or the county or anyone, that they can't close the roads during that holiday time when a lot of people depend on it for their livelihood businesses without, and we can still grant an exemption for projects.
Was it slowing down the Amazon trucks, or what?
It's well-played, I'll give you that. But I think it is important, one of the things that Mike didn't mention, but our staff really takes it seriously. The guy from AV Sports and Graphics talks to Mike virtually every day until 10th Street was open. So we do take that seriously, we're going to make it a condition of the permit, and we'll have that within 60 days done in the permit, and people will not be able to do that without a waiver. So, thank you for bringing it up.
So while we're talking about roads and freeways and highways, are we looking at the air quality around the freeways, given the new research that's coming out, and lung disease and COPD and all that?
We did look at that.
Are we relying on the state?
I'd have to get, the answer is yes, I don't have any answer on that. I know we have staff looking at that, I also know that AVA QMD was looking at that as well, too.
And my concern is we not find ourselves in a position like LA is, the apartments are already built. But apparently, it's an extremely dangerous condition right now for those apartments to be near those freeways, given the particulate matter coming off them. And I would like to have a plan. I don't know what the plan is, I don't know if we should be doing something about building permits within so many feet, or if we should do anything. But what I don't want to do is just pass it up to the state and wait for them to do something, because we all know what that means.
I think you requested on, part of the Measure R, that those walls be built along the freeways.
Yeah, but I don't think the walls will do it. The particulate matter is what, it comes right over those walls into the apartments. And I don't know if it's as dangerous as they say it is. I think it is, I mean, we're selling a home because of it. But I just don't want us to be in a situation where we allow apartments to go up, or schools to be built next to the freeway like another city did.
What we'll commit, the answer is yes, and it's a land use issue, and I think that we'll probably formalize a little bit more by maybe asking our planning commission to look at it as well, too, with additional research.
I want a definitive health and safety answer to it, all right? This is, this would be the causative effect of that, okay? And then we'll make a decision based upon the science of it, not the economics of it, all right? Fair enough. Okay, good, thank you. Oh, George, come on down.
Mayor Perez, Vice Mayor Chris, council members, I'm asking you a question, hopefully that you will present a question to these gentlemen here and ladies. Why is it only on a seven-year program? You go to Europe, their autobahn is on a 10 to 12-year. Why are we not sending somebody over to find out what materials they use? One material I do know they use is used ground-up used tires, car tires, that goes into their process. But it's extended the life of the autobahn over 10 to 12 years. And I've been hearing this construction going on in California since 61, and that's all they've ever said, is seven years, seven years, seven years. Why, you guys presented us, elated everybody by being the first city to utilize the solar panels. We're the first, well, why can't we be the first city to utilize, go into Europe, find out what they're using, and implement it over here and boost this up?
You know how to spin me up, don't you?
Pardon me?
You know how to spin me up, don't you? Just make it a first. So why aren't we the first?
We, go ahead, Mike. Do you want, if you want the answer, they need the mic.
Yeah, let her take your mic, okay? Come on up.
It'd be my guess, you ask.
All right, you can ask her, we're a friendly group here.
Well, whatever, I miss Mike, we'll fill in, but we do, for anything that isn't failing, like 20th West, that's, the failure that we have there is so deep that we can't do simple treatments like grinding overlay, so that's why those are full reconstructs, and then we expect it a year, a lifespan of it, of, you know, 20 to 50 to 70 years. But for our other roads where the pavement isn't so bad and where it's not failing so extremely, we are treating the roads for seven to 10 years. And so we say seven to 10 years because that's conservative with the methods that we have available to us and that work in our climate. The autobahn is a little bit different in another country than it is here in Lancaster. Our pavement treatments are catered to our specific environment, and we do actually do recycled rubber tires and other treatments in various different locations where it's most appropriate.
So is the recycled tires work?
It does, yes, because we've, we've put it in, in a couple of places, and so what we've seen so far is that it does.
So what's the selection process?
Well, that's part of why we're hiring payment engineering. Currently, we, based on industry standard, we look at our conditions and we kind of compare it to what's been done in the past to evaluate if it'll work, but with, with payment engineering, we'll be able to actually set out a program that bases it on various types of conditions so that we're more consistent across the board.
Okay, so what's your title?
I'm the Capital Program Manager.
A Capital Program Engineer?
Yeah, I'm an, I am an engineer.
She holds the money.
She what?
She holds the money.
Really?
Capital money, yeah.
Yeah.
So you know your stuff, huh?
Well, try.
So, George, what are you doing? She knows what she's doing.
Well, we have a lot of people working on it. Well, okay, you want it?
No, she's, she's got it, don't take it away from her, she's got it.
No, sir, I haven't, but I do know it's, it has been paved with Portland cement concrete. Typically, when we, when we're talking with-
It's all black.
I, I understand that, sir.
So you really thought it was a good idea to jump up there, huh?
Absolutely. The autobahn doesn't see temperatures at 130 degrees.
Fair enough.
Okay? And it doesn't see the temperature swing also from 130 degrees to drop down to approximately 70 and even lower in the winter time to 50 and 40 degrees. So what happens is the performance of the chemical and the polymers, and also in the asphalt, it causes a reaction based on the traffic index. The autobahn doesn't have the same traffic index as it does, say, the 14 freeway. Now, yes, they do travel at higher speeds, and yes, they have figured out that you can put a two-inch asphalt wearing course on top of the Portland cement concrete. I understand that. Everything that we've been using to date since I've been here, I've been here a year, and previously Lancaster has used, in the Green Book, we're currently utilizing 15% recycled asphalt in all of our paving. And, and when we, when we go out to build the road, when we use base rock, we're using recycled base rock. So it's not virgin, it's not being cut out of the, it's not being cut out of the earth, it's actually being reused. So all of the projects we're doing, we're implementing, using, using the latest environmental standards, but what we're contending with is Mother Nature and how those materials perform. Now, obviously, up here in the high desert, things, things have a tendency to get hot and they get cold. What you have is you have all these, right, it gets these, we have expansion and contraction coefficients that are out of control, and it wreaks havoc on the mixed design. So what we do, before we go into any of these projects, is we take a look at the Green Book and we make those applicable changes. So we, we've actually started to shift, our asphalt is quote-unquote 70-10, and that's a spec, don't worry about it. And that's, that has to do with the temperature range. What happens, because you, because you've made your argument about California, what happens is sometimes the state will say carte blanche, "Southern California, you need to use 70-10 oil." Well, that doesn't work in the high desert. It may work down in Long Beach, where it's nice and temperate, and it's, you're right on the ocean, but it doesn't work up here. So we're making all of those applicable changes, we're, we say seven years because it's a factor of safety. That's what it comes down to. Most of the time, yeah, so, and that's, and that's really the, that's really the difference and-
But it does get cold.
Yes, sir.
Hey, George, thanks. I just learned a lot, I wouldn't have learned it had you not asked the question. I appreciate it.
And George, I'll give you my card, we can, we can talk some more.
Okay, thank you. Okay, what are we doing down?
Just-
That's it, isn't it?
You want to receive and file that?
What?
We need to receive and file it.
Do we?
You do not need to take action to receive and file.
Can I have a receive and filed stamp?
You can hit your gavel if you'd like.
Received and filed.
There you go.
Okay. You good now?
Yeah.
You asked me what to do.
Council reports. What's going on with AVTA?
We're building three new transportation centers, 40th Street, Palmdale Boulevard, we're putting one in there. We approved a contract with the hospital for that, we're putting one in at the MetroLink and Sierra Highway, the transportation center, and we'll put charging stations at all those so we can redo that. We did bids today, and the other one will be in probably somewhere out in Lake Los Angeles. So we'll have five transportation centers. So we're doing good over there, we're on budget, everything's good. We did have a meeting with Caltrans, a, met with Mr. Bozigan and Caltrans about how long it took for different projects to get done here. It took us three months to get a meeting with them, and that's how we introduced them to the problem. So, we asked them-
We could have sued them and got a judgment at that amount of time.
We asked them to have an individual that works directly with the city of Palmdale and directly with the city of Lancaster, either out of our city council, our city halls, and, so we won't have those problems in the future. Went to the volunteer appreciation dinner, that's when we said thank you to all the sheriff volunteers, we have about 300 of them, it was a good turnout. We did the AVA QMD budget, everything looks good, we're reducing our, by stature, we can raise it 15%, we're not, we don't have to do that, we're gonna raise the rates just a little bit, and we're still the lowest in Southern California. So we're probably half the cost of South Coast, which is the area that we broke off And Sheriff Boosters did a casino night, and we did a casino night where 1,800 people showed up to support our local deputies, and it's which is very notable that around the entire country, we have people protesting our sheriff's deputies, and in the Antelope Valley, we have 1,800 people showing up to support them. So I thought that was very, it's a very good night for the city of Lancaster and for the entire Antelope Valley.
How much money were you raised on that?
It'll be close to $400,000.
That's pretty good.
But I think the biggest picture of it was, it's, the entire community showed up to support law enforcement, and we support our deputies, and it's the, the people coming out to actually support the deputies what's, was impressive, and it was a big event.
Good.
Anyone else?
I just wanted to say the poppy festival was amazing, I got to go on Saturday and just wanted to thanks to our staff, you guys have done an amazing job.
Yeah, I would assume that that probably set a record, or close to it. We couldn't have had it any perfect, and again, nothing but positive feedback from the public over the weekend, so what a great community event, so, thank you, Rhonda, and your staff.
Gerald, how's our community center coming?
Glad you asked. We, we had an all-day meeting today just about, about the community center, me and Ms. Chisholm. We have about five to 10 programs pending, we actually met with a couple of them today. We have a tentative date of opening that we're looking forward to, have a design, it's coming together fantastic, so we're very excited about it.
What's the opening day? Sir? What's the opening day?
We're hoping the first week of September. Might be quicker, might be a little later, but it's only because of the design and what we're trying to do and make sure it's being used as much as possible. Sir?
We missed the summer that way.
Yes, we did, but due to, you know, unforeseen events, we had no choice. And we want to make sure, Mayor, that when we open it up, it's done right and done properly. So we're trying to make sure that when we do it-
Talk to Luis, maybe you can get some kids to work.
Yeah.
All right, good. So, how's the fab lab?
The Makerspace is coming along as well. I have been to tour many of them, I'm actually headed to Cal State, Bakersfield is doing one that they're opening to the public, so I'm headed there on Thursday to actually see it, so.
You're not telling me Bakersfield's going to open theirs before we open one?
No, that's not what I said. They're in, they're in the process, so I'm just going to steal some of their ideas.
So when's ours open?
It's opening with the community center.
I'm sorry?
It's opening with the community center.
You mean, after the summer?
After summer.
So are we putting them in the same place?
Yes.
Oh, we are, great idea.
We have a spot design inside, yes.
Okay, good idea.
Yes.
Great.
I had to fight with Toy to get it, but we got it.
I'm just old, I want to see it open, you know? I mean-
I fought for it, I fought for it hard.
Great, all right. Jim, I almost missed you. What's the planning commission doing, other than letting people build apartments next to freeways?
Letting what?
People build apartments next to freeways.
Well, it's interesting listening to your conversation, as I've visualized our general plan, there's very little, if any, residentially planned properties adjacent to freeways. Typically, you find hotel sites and commercial centers, so if that's not a concern-
See why I pointed you?
We don't have a big problem.
See why I pointed you? You were way ahead of the curve on that one, right?
Well, I'm not sure that I'm way ahead, but it gave me a chance to think about it a little bit.
Okay.
What we are doing, however, in May, at council's direction, we are reconsidering the project at 20th West and Avenue L, and that'll, that'll be coming before us for a new public hearing on the, on the project.
Oh, that's the liquor store, right?
It's a mini mart.
It's a gas station.
Actually, I don't, I don't think, well, I know for a fact that we've never had a liquor store application in the 10 years I've been on the-
Well, somebody will have to tell me the difference then, between a mini mart-
It would be nice if we never have one, it'd be all right with me.
I just don't see the difference.
You don't?
They both sell alcohol, right?
No.
They don't?
No.
No alcohol at all?
One sells beer and wine, the other one sells-
Oh, beer and wine is not alcohol in the city of Lancaster?
There's a difference.
I, I hear, I hear your concern, Mayor. It'll be, it'll be an interesting public hearing to reconsider the entire project and the opportunity to revisit the entire matter. How it turns out, I have no idea.
Actually, I actually think that's a tough issue, because I think the, I think the residents, you know, do have a, an issue. Yep. I also think that it's Avenue L that's an eight-lane street, and why we would think that should be residential, I'm not quite sure, but I'm glad it's you and not me.
Well, depending on our decision, it could be you.
Yeah, well, I'm kind of hoping that, you know, you will reach a compromise with the community that's acceptable to everyone, and I can go a week without somebody throwing rocks at me.
Me, too.
You're a bigger target than I am, so that's not- It's, it's always interesting, though, when you have people you've known 50 years show up, and they're really upset, you know? I just found it to be-
I visited with a few this weekend, though.
It's a, it's a different dynamic, isn't it?
It certainly is.
But at the end of the day, it's still an eight, eight-lane- But at the end of the day, it's still an eight-lane street.
Gotta make a decision what's best for the community, that's for sure.
That's right.
So, other than that, routine items, conditional use permits for restaurants selling beer and wine, and tenor track map extensions. Other than that, very typical.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, city... Let's see. City manager, any announcements?
Yes, a couple of announcements and a couple of videos. A couple of updates. The first one is council tasked us with coming up with a video to sort of show folks where jobs are, how to get resources, things of that nature. That proved a bit more of a coordination effort than one with Dot Nicole Allen from our communications divisions leading that up. There's a lot of players involved, and she's done a really good job of getting them all together so that we can schedule the right people, where the training is, the jobs, those kinds of things. So we should have that video for you in May. But the value in coordinating with the folks is gonna be great. So that's an update on that project. We also have two other projects that the community will see coming forward on a landing page called Lancaster Engage. We want input on one, which is a homeless plan, which is to understand homelessness in Lancaster at a deeper level than it's been done just at the county level. That's funded through Measure H and through Catherine Barker, Supervisor Barker. And it's an opportunity for stakeholders and people to do surveys. There's a also, I believe it's on May 1st, is a town hall... Not a town hall, an input session for that. We also have on that page the opportunity to input on a council-directed initiative, which is looking at library services provided by the county in Lancaster, where they reach a certain level, where they could be more improved, what people want, what their impediments are. Really want people to go to that survey because I think there's a smaller subset of people that actually use the library now than could use it. So that's something that's very exciting to us. That survey is there, and then we're also gonna have a meeting, I believe it's on May 10th, for the library study. So those are two things that are pretty exciting coming up that we hope the community participates in. We put it out on various social media and such, and we're looking forward to the input on those. Couple weeks ago?
What are we doing to make certain that we're not just imposing our conception of the world that's 70, 60... Well, okay, Mark, late 50 years old.
Very, very late 50s.
I mean, we have this view that libraries are vibrant parts of the community, but I'm beginning to question whether or not young people view them that way. And if the internet hasn't superseded them, and if we shouldn't be looking at ways to spend that money in a different fashion. I mean, there's the community center aspect of the library, but, you know, Amazon seems to do quite well in delivering books through the mail.
I agree 100%, and we're not imposing it. I'm not involved. We're gonna get a cross-section of folks, but the belief is it's gonna be something like a community center that's engaging, where people can go. It's not our view of a library. Can ask Toy. Toy, if you can talk a little bit about working with the consultant?
Yes. Libraries today are very different than what we know them to be. One of the statements we make is that it's not your grandmother's library, and so it's not the library where you have to shh. They're very much communal in nature. They're hubs of communities. They're social gathering places where, you know... We will involve the teens, just so you know. Councilmember Underwood Jacobs is kind of the face of this, if you will, and she has already charged and tasked her daughter with getting the teens together to hear what they want. But in a lot of libraries, you have makerspaces. You have a lot of hands-on learning. You have literacy programs. So you have much more than collections and books going on. You also have programs that are offered in the library are typically free. And so you have a lot of programs that engage young toddlers all the way to adults, depending on what it is that they're interested in. You might even see book clubs. You might even see knitting. They really have become community centers, very engaging and more vibrant than what you know a library to be.
Thank you. I'm anxious to see the final outcome of it. All right. The fire in the tunnel. All right? No deaths, no injuries?
No, thank you for asking. This is one of the updates. No, there weren't. The fire department did a very good job. Our crews did an amazing job of sending cameras down so the fire wouldn't have to be put in danger. End result was it looked like it was about in the middle, near the apartment complex. It was homeless had been down there. There was furniture. There was wood. There was pallets. There was some propane tanks, if you will, or one or two propane tanks. So the fire department did a great job, put it out. We got to watch it the whole day, no deaths. One of the things that I've been talking to Mr. Vos about that is shocking when you look in the community is the number of shopping carts that are there that clog up drainage ditches and things of that nature. A lot of the ones that are plastic, I won't mention the store, but some stores have plastic. Those things heat up and burn forever, and there were a couple in there. So we have with current shopping centers, we do not allow... We have to have the... I don't know what the term is, but the cart will... The wheels will lock when you get past a certain point. We do not impose that on our existing shopping centers. So in talking to Mr. Vos, we're gonna bring that up to the planning commission and get their thoughts on what we might be able to-
Can we do it on the existing centers?
Well, we can, but it's how you do it and things of that nature. It should go through-
It's really easy. You just tell them to do it.
Again, the planning commission, I believe, will-
No, but he's right. And also, when uses change in an existing center, for instance, a dollar store would have shopping carts that leave their facility, you know, in a revived center that we wouldn't necessarily have the oversight on. So, I mean, there's a myriad of issues that need to be addressed.
It seems to me the biggest thing that ought to be addressed is that we knew it for years. I knew it for years, that people were living in those drainage ditches or whatever you call them, those tunnels. We knew it. They would disappear into the tunnels, you know, and we'd talk about it. And it never occurred to me, but it should have occurred to us, that that was a serious threat to human life. Let's make certain that within a certain period of time, every one of those tunnels is cleared. I mean, you know, a fire is not an appropriate way to clear the tunnel.
All right? Probably causes more damage than good when you get 1,000-degree heat.
Yeah, breaking concrete down.
And the impact on concrete.
Well, that is an extreme example. You're 100% right, and it is a vexing problem for us and lots of others. What we do do before storms or things of that nature, we go. We go to each of the tunnels. We go everywhere and try to clear it out, but they do come back. We put screens on some of them, but the problem with the screen is it can trap you in as opposed to, you know, letting you get out of a tunnel if there was water going through it or not. So we are working on that now as well, too, how we do that. We do have one at Avenue L, which is a screen that keeps people out, but it has sort of an escape hatch on the top in case. So, yeah, we are looking at those, but we have miles and miles and miles of tunnels, and it's vexing.
Really? So it's that big of a...
There's shows, for example. There's a show out. They showed the tunnels of Las Vegas or the tunnels of New York. Cities across the country, they have people living under the city because they're protected from the elements, all of those things.
Okay, well, they gotta move to another city. All right?
Okay.
I don't know how we effectuate that, but we do have to effectuate it.
Well, I think first, one of the things you're doing-
That could have been a disaster.
Yeah, somebody could have... It could have been a lot of life loss there.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
We have two more, if I may. One is the... We had about three weeks ago the opening of the Elise Clifford Center Reimagined. The MOA staff and Rhonda's team have done a phenomenal job on that, taking the building at Prime Desert Woodlands and making it really engaging for kids. Teachers bring their kids all the time, but it's a very interactive space. And on the opening, there must have been 400 or 500 kids and families that went through that day. And it was really amazing. I invite the council to go out there because it's not just the Prime Desert Woodland. This is really an engaging space. So we'll attempt to capture that on our first video, which is about four minutes.
Today, we're visiting the Elise Clifford interpretive center at the Prime Desert Woodland Preserve, which just went through a lot of upgrades. And the city of Lancaster's Robert Benitez is gonna tell us all about it.
Let's take a look.
Hey, I'm told I'm gonna meet somebody named Joshua.
You will meet Joshua, yes. This is a partnership between the city of Lancaster, the Lancaster Museum and Public Art Foundation, and Signs and Designs. Our whole idea with this project was that we would take what was existing here in the Elise Clifford interpretive center and sort of reinvent that and represent that to the general public.
Tell me about the process, too.
It started with interviewing stakeholders, so that included our ranger program, the local Audubon Society, and activated each one of our teams at the museum. So from our collections team, our engagement team, our graphic design team, all of those people were involved in this process in making sure that we were able to bring a space here that was open and accessible to the public, more so than it had been in the past.
And who's this guy?
You don't. So this is Joshua the Jack Rabbit. He is our ambassador at the museum. He's our mascot as well. And he started out at MOA, and then we found out that we were gonna be here at the interpretive center, and we thought, why not? Let's get Joshua there, too.
So can you and Joshua give me a tour?
Yeah, absolutely. We'd be happy to do that. One of the things that we have here that we'd like to talk about is the different tribes that lived here in the Antelope Valley.
So all of these tribes actually were throughout the Antelope Valley region?
Absolutely. They were here that spanned from the San Gabriel Mountains all the way up to the Tehachapi's. And we also have them paired with pieces from our collection as well as some artwork from local Antelope Valley artists as well.
And this plays into it?
Absolutely. So this is one of our engagement activities that we have. Participants can create their own petroglyphs and pictographs using chalk, of course. We also wanted to incorporate geology. So we have this really great graphic that our team came up with on stratigraphy and some basic laws of stratigraphy and, you know, when you're digging, what is older versus what is younger and how to tell the difference between. So this is a great case on geology. All of these minerals here are found in the Antelope Valley. The Antelope Valley, of course, has a rich mining history. So this is touching a little bit on the mining history as well.
And then what, do the kids play in this?
Yeah, so this is our excavation station. And what this is, is a rubber mulch. Again, we wanted to keep everything that we did true to the sustainability of the building.
So when they're doing... Are they coming up with something when they're digging there?
Oh, yeah. So what we have are we have actual sort of mini geodes here. So if you broke these up, you would see a smaller version of that larger one there. So there'd be crystals inside of this. And then we have a number of different sorts of animals of the Mojave, each with their Latin name, with their ranges, a little bit about those species here as well, along with a fun fact within the DigiKnow section. We can go and take a look at the touch table. There's lots of different things that people can touch here and feel, including the furs and pieces like this.
Well, the kids can just come along and they can-
Yeah, and they can touch it, absolutely. And they have a magnifying glass here. Yeah.
You guys thought of everything.
Oh, we did.
You really did.
The rammed earth wall is actually a structure that we had to cover for this project. It goes straight through the foundation, so it's actually just connected to the earth, and it brings the moisture in and allows the space to cool down. So it's another form of air conditioning, if you will.
So how often do the teachers bring all their schoolchildren here?
We have regular field trips here. So all teachers have to do is reach out via the city of Lancaster, give them a call, and they can schedule a tour.
Wow. Well, thank you and Joshua for giving us the tour. This is really good. And so everybody should come out every day?
Yeah, absolutely. So the hours here are Wednesdays, Saturdays, and Sundays from 10 to 4:00.
Really a good space, and we invite people to come. The last one, we have just a one-minute video on the Poppy Festival. Thank the council for coming out. Really was good. We had our biggest gate ever. Our attendance was 40,925. We didn't get on the video, but spoiler, the mayor got very, very close to adopting a new pup, but the last minute was overruled.
Didn't make it on the video?
I didn't want to... Carol would be watching.
I was attacked by a pit bull.
Oh.
No, a pit bull. He licked me to death.
He got so close to a life he couldn't even imagine, and he was giving-
I was gonna take him home and my wife, you know? I live in an abusive relationship. It's true. I mean, seriously, don't you think the mayor should be able to have a puppy? Oh, well, okay, it wasn't a puppy.
Someone needs to tell him peanut butter's not his sunscreen. That's why he licked you to death.
Do we turn a profit on that?
We do. It pays for itself. So maybe-
Well, no. See, a profit is you actually put money in the bank.
How do I say this? It does turn a profit, not including full-time staff.
Really? It was just a superb event. You did a great job. Okay, what else we got? We're good?
That's it. Thank you.
City clerk.
This is the time to address the city council agency and authority on non-agendized matters. Speaker cards can be found on the back table of the council chambers. Individual speakers are limited to three minutes each. State law prohibits the city council from taking action on items not on the agenda, and your matter may be referred to the city manager. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Heather Brown? She left. Scott Ely? Welcome.
Hello, council. Thank you for your time. First, I just want to say congratulations, Molly, Chris, for the election. I meant to get ahold of you guys a couple of weeks ago, but the election, you know, put last couple of weeks' meetings on hold. So basically, what I want to talk to you guys about was State Bill 54. And it's controversial in nature. There's many feelings about it on both sides, the whole sanctuary city status and this and that. And as you guys may or may not have known, been paying attention to the news, there's several cities that are choosing to... As whether or not is there right to opt out of State Bill 54. And I come to you requesting that you guys possibly take it amongst yourselves, amongst the residents of the city, and figure out if you guys wanted to do the same. Like I said, there's a lot of feelings on it either way. Empathy is bad for politics, but we do have the right as a charter city to question the constitutionality and the function of it. I know Mayor X Paris, I've known you for a long time. You and my family might have butted heads in the past over certain situations, but you're on your game as far as what generates revenue, public safety. You've done a lot of great work for the city.
Thank you.
So that's what I was saying is, you know, right now, we're in a whole state versus federal government, versus federal government versus state, and different cities turning around suing the state. The amicus deadline is expired, but as a charter city, you do have the right to decide whether or not you want to opt out of it. And I request that you guys possibly take it amongst yourselves to agree to put it on the agenda for next meetup in May to figure out how things will go.
Allison? Explain this to me.
The... I believe what Mr. Eli is asking you to do is to challenge the Senate Bill 54 regarding sanctuary state for the state of California.
No, he said we can opt out. What does that mean?
I disagree with his legal analysis.
What?
I disagree with his legal analysis.
Well, not opt out, but choose whether or not you want to abide and enforce it on the grounds that it is constitutional or not. And that's for you guys to decide. Huntington Beach actually turned around, decided to sue the state of California on the grounds that it's not.
Yeah, let me tell you, I don't know where they are. We haven't discussed it.
Yes.
And I've been out of town, so I haven't had an opportunity to talk to them.
Yeah.
But, you know, my view of it is I got baptized in a sanctuary- But, you know, my, my view of it is I got baptized in a sanctuary. I mean, why, why are we buying into that frame? I mean, you know, it's uphill from the very start when we start saying we're opposed to sanctuary sa, I, I just don't get it. I also am very cognizant of the fact that almost half of our population is Latino in this community. So of what benefit is it to us to get involved in the fight in the first place? I mean, I'd, I'd have to see some benefit coming back to us. You follow me?
Yes.
I mean, I, there's all kinds of things I disagree with or I agree with and, and principles that I have that I may not share with sometimes anybody else, but you know what I mean? I mean, I mean, this is a prin, a principle issue. But as a, as the leader of the city, you know, I have to see a benefit. How does the well-being of the people who live in Lancaster improve with, with every decision we make? You know, that, that has to be the, the primary question, does the well-being of the people? Now, if somebody were coming to me and say, do, will you support anything that says undocumented felons need to be deported as soon as their sentence is over, I would say, yes, absolutely. That's a no-brainer. But when you start talking to me about sanctuaries, I'm, get really uncomfortable because I don't think that our, our citizens are going to have a full appreciation for what it is. And unless there's a benefit coming our way...
Well, there's most definitely a criminal element that does come with...
That's right. I agree.
People.
But shouldn't we be focusing on that?
Yes, we could.
You know?
A great way to possibly focus on it is to determine how we could deal with Sacramento kind of bullying the rest of the cities in the state because they hold the majority power to decide what's best for us.
Well, I think they're abusing that power to such an extent that it's not going to be, they're not going to hold it much longer.
I would hope not.
Yeah, but, and also, you know, but I also don't want to get sucked into this thing of, I want everybody to be absolutely clear. I think American children, meaning children who are born in this country, regardless who their parents are, are afforded all of the protections of being American citizens.
God bless.
And that includes, that includes not subjecting them to being ripped apart in their families. I think those children need parents, and it's, it's incumbent upon us to leave those parents alone if all they're, they're guilty of is being here without documents, because it's those children we should be protecting. They're citizens. And, you know, I mean, I've said it many, many times, I don't know how to go to church with somebody on Sunday and deport them on Monday, on Monday.
It is a very, very complex issue.
So let's focus on where it should be. If you're, if you're a criminal, you gotta get the hell out of our country. I mean, that, that I agree with.
That's where the quote-unquote sanctuary status, the whole idea of the sanctuary is that, the cities and different law enforcement agencies are reprimanded and they're forced into not reporting criminal status when they release these illegal migrants.
Yeah, I, I agree.
And so if someone breaks the law, they could get released back in the community.
I think it's a, I think it's a trick.
We're in the northernmost city in LA County. We're pretty much LA's dumping ground. We're trying to, I mean, we do, we do a good job.
We've noticed that, yeah.
We do a great job, but...
We've noticed that.
Let's face it, we're at the end of the line here as far as like the transit roads go and everything, and, you know, the Amtrak's right there, and it's...
I, I just think we should stay focused on, on what benefits the people who live here. And certainly getting rid of felons benefits the city. Uh, but casting the net too broad does not benefit the city, does not benefit the, the people who live here, does not benefit any of us. I mean, I do not view us as a mean-spirited city. But I do view us as a law and order city.
Yes.
And the two can coexist very nicely.
Sure.
Right?
Can I address?
Sure, go ahead.
Um, Mr. Eli, the, the difference that I see is that, like, California City has its own police department. We contract with LA County. LA County has the policies and procedures that they tell what their deputies do. We do not tell them what to do and how to do it. That is done by downtown LA. Those policies and procedures have already been set. So if were we to get involved in this, it's not like if we had our own contract police department, then we could make a difference. And then we, we should weigh in on this problem. But we would be weighing in and making 50% upset with us regardless of the way that we went. It would make no difference if we opted in or opted out, except to upset 50% of the people. And that's just not good politics, number one. But we could not tell our sheriff department how to proceed. That is done by LA.
I don't know. Let's try it. If there, if they commit a part one crime and they're undocumented, we want you to call ICE. What do you do with that?
Well, Sheriff's Department, uh, works in compliance with the Truth Act and the Fair Act, uh, which, which govern when we...
Where do they come up with these names?
By ICE and that kind of stuff. Uh, but Sheriff McDonald was very big on this issue. And anybody who followed Senate Bill 54 was going through, um, saw that he put a lot of effort into it, uh, because his concerns were very similar to yours, was if the, the state wanted to cut out us doing any notifications. Uh, and the concern with Sheriff McDonald and a lot of law enforcement was that if you did that, uh, the, um, federal immigration was going to come in and they would be out in the community, and there'd be a lot of collateral damage where just regular hard-working folks are getting swept up as the ICE agents are out in the community looking for these, for these felons. And they worked very hard on that, and we do, we do notify ICE.
There we go.
Uh, in, in conjunction or in concurrence with the Truth Act and the Fair Act. And if you look those up online, it's very, um...
Yes.
It would give you the, uh...
So you're already doing it?
Circumstances. Yes. And it's not perfect legislation by, you know, I don't think anybody would ever think so, but, um, but, uh, Sheriff McDonald worked very hard to, to make the changes, or I shouldn't say make changes, but encourage Sacramento to make the changes to the bill, uh, Senate Bill 54, which would protect, uh, the hard-working folks of the community, but allow us also, uh, to notify, make notifications, like I said, in concurrence with the Truth Act and the Fair Act.
Okay.
Okay.
Does that work?
Okay, yeah, I was just gonna, basically, the only reason I addressed you guys is that you could possibly address this whole situation.
Well, it's certainly something we should be discussing.
Would it be something discussing at next meeting? Putting it on the agenda?
I don't, I don't mind talking about anything. Uh, I kind of like to hear myself talk, actually.
No.
If there's some benefit to it, I don't mind putting it on the agenda.
Okay.
All right, I don't, I don't know what, there has to be a, uh, there has to be a goal. I mean, is there something that we should be voting on, or is it just information?
Although I was pretty...
Talk to me, Allison.
At this point, I would recommend we put it on for discussion so that we can, you can have it agendized, so you can decide what it is you might like to vote on. At this point, we're getting close to passing the line for the Brown Act with this discussion because this is not an agendized item. So I think a discussion item for the next agenda, and then possibly an action item after that, depending on what the council decides to discuss.
Works for me.
Okay.
But I don't want anybody disappointed. I mean, if it, if it even comes close, if it even comes close to deporting parents of American citizens for no other reason than being here undocumented, I'm, I'm deathly opposed to it. I think that's, that's the most abusive thing we can do to American children is to take away their parents. I think that's true with any children. Uh, and I don't want any illusions about it. I, I do not think that that's acceptable. Uh, so, I mean, if people want to come and yell at me and tell me it is, they can, but it won't change anything. I mean, we have a duty to protect the children of this community above all else, all else.
Definitely.
All right? Okay, but I'm happy to have the discussion. I think it, it furthers community involvement, you know, as long as it's civil.
Yes, definitely. It's at least worth addressing in a discussion. It is a really important topic.
If anybody yells at me, I'm going to cut the meeting short, so. And I'm not worried about your group, okay? It tends to inflame people.
Definitely.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time, sir.
Okay.
Thank you for your input.
Yes.
Fred, aren't you glad we did this after the election? What?
I too was going to bring up this sanctuary thing, but I'll wait till the next discussion is held on it. My, good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council.
Hold on, Marvin's yelling at me for putting it on the agenda. All right, we're ready.
Good evening again. I just want to mention, first of all, the Poppy Festival was phenomenal. My friend, she's also in a wheelchair. We went together by accident. We were leaving at four o'clock in the afternoon. This is Sunday afternoon, mind you. Sunday afternoon, when everybody should start going home, they were coming in by the hundreds, and I'm not exaggerating. I mean, there were just groves and groves. Couldn't get over it. How many people were coming, coming to the Poppy Feast on Sunday because it ends at six o'clock? It was, it was really great. And so was Casino Night. I enjoyed that, too, a lot. So everybody I took with me enjoyed it. Thank you. And I wanted to mention one, one little thing. For the people who have senior, that know seniors or have a senior neighbor, uh, because what I experienced when I got sick, uh, to check in with their neighbors that are disabled, uh, because sometimes they don't have anybody to speak to or whatever, knock on their doors and ask them if they need help. I was lucky, I had a lot of friends. They took care of me as far as going to get my medicine because I couldn't leave the house. They, they fed me, they brought me my groceries, but I started thinking, there's a lot of people out, a lot of seniors especially, that are, uh, living by themselves and they have no one. So I'm, I'm just bringing it out there to the public. Make sure you take care of your neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you, Fred. I want you to visit Ken.
There we go. No, just, my motor was running.
Took a nap. Thanks for thinking of me, Mayor. I appreciate that. Thank you.
All right. Anybody got anything else?
Thank you.
The city council meeting will be adjourned in memory of Dr. Ken Santorelli, a U.S.